The twenty-fourth day of the fourth regular session, the twenty-second Congress. We now come to order, may we all borrow it for a moment of silent prayer. You're done, Chairman Rusman?
Thank you, Speaker.
I don't see Chairman Figueroa there is still praying.
I'm done, I'm done, Speaker.
You're done, that's good. So, wrong call.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Arrietaz.
Please.
Senator Christian. Senator Figueroa. Senator Collin.
Yes.
Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman.
Senator Renim.
Senator Renim, Senator. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Net. Senator Palik.
Yes.
Senator Berman. Senator Romalo. Senator Urosamal.
Good morning.
Good morning, Senator. Senator Wali. Speaker Simana.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, thirteen members are present.
Point of privilege, may I ask that the Chief Clerk note that I am here personally, physically, and mentally.
Chief Clerk, note that as Chairman Christian is present. Okay, next item is reading of the Journal, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you, all honorable members, staff, and all those who are observing our session this morning by whatever means. And again, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Chair, again.
Move ten seconded, I will dispense with the reading of the Journal. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Gary, we now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item.
Item number five, presidential communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Assign that, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item number six, FASM Supreme Court communications, none, also, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session, continue, Chief Clerk.
Item number seven, member communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, departmental communications, we do not have any at the moment, Mr. Speaker. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. And item ten, state communications, we are on receipt of one, and it's number twenty-two dash sixteen.
And that, Chief Clerk, short recess. Congress is back in session. Next item.
Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Twelve, item twelve, municipality communications, none, also. Item number thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mr. Speaker. And item number fourteen, miscellaneous communications, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
We're now on our order.
Point of privilege, Speaker.
Point, say your point, Chairman Wali.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to all of you. Today is Vice Chairman Aaron Ballik's birthday, so please join me in wishing him a happy birthday.
That's the one that from.
Hey, that's a secret.
Birthday, Vice Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's the one that has Mantezuma in it.
That's what?
From the Valley of Mantezuma or something, no?
Okay. Thank you.
Also, Mantezuma, not Valley, also, Mantezuma.
To the shores of Tripoli.
Let's recognize the birthday by giving him a round of applause.
All right, yeah, why not? I thought we should be singing, but.
Happy birthday!
Mr. Speaker, I would like to propose some amendment to one of my public projects for twenty thousand dollars to give to Senator Palik on his birthday. If that's in order.
I wasn't going to say it's in order, but I'm going to say that's probably unlawful, I don't know.
Regardless, thank you, Vice Chairman.
Now on our order of the day, so item fifteen.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Point of privilege.
A point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, Vice Speaker, Floor Leader, distinguished colleagues, staff, and all citizens who are observing our session this morning. Mr. Speaker, I rise on a point of privilege to share a sad and tragic event that occurred in Coshai this week. A young pregnant mother was at the state hospital, excited to bear her first child. Due to complications, she must undergo C-section. This operation cannot be performed because there is currently no surgeon at the state hospital. This predicament puts the lives of both the unborn baby and the mother in mortal danger. The husband and the family then scrambled to send her to Pompe as soon as possible. There was a PMA charter flight on Tuesday this week, chartered by the FSM Constitutional Convention to take two of their delegates, Kankan delegates, to Pompe. The pregnant mother was allowed to board that plane. A commotion followed, then she was asked to deplane. I learned later that none of the nine pre-poked and confirmed passengers was willing to give up their seat. The patient was taken back to the state hospital. Next day, on Wednesday, the baby died in her womb. After much struggle, she delivered her baby yesterday, an angel, baby girl, who was buried immediately thereafter. The mother, thankfully, is recovering and so far is doing well. And I pray that no postpartum complications arise. Mr. Speaker, you know, I raised this issue and wish to share with members, my purpose for sharing this tragic story is not to lay blame on anyone. And I think we discussed this morning during recess, some of things that are happening in our country. Rather, I share this to remind us of our Christian values and beliefs, to be good Samaritans, to take care of those in our society who are vulnerable, especially our children, the sick, the elderly, to have compassion and empathy. The greatness of our nation and its moral progress cannot be, can be judged by how well it treats its weakest member. It is our culture, Mr. Speaker, and we all know that in the Pacific, it is our culture as Pacific Islanders to be warm and friendly, to be loving and caring, as we are almost all related in one way or another. I simply ask, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues, that we remember who we are. Thank you very much, and again, sad story, but I just want to share that I think there are lessons to be learned, there are questions to be asked, and I know time and place for those discussions to take place will come later, but I just want to share that it's tragic, and I really am heartbroken by this incident, and I just wish to share that with all of the members. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congressman Palik, for that kind of tender power. Yes, go ahead, Vice Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, it is, it is indeed a very sad story to hear. What is more disturbing is that in this whole nation, Coshai is the one state that professes Christianity more than any other one state in the country, and yet Senator Palik has to tell us this sad story about someone not willing to give up a seat for another person with good, you know, that really needs it.
Figure. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, we belong the same line as Vice Chairman Christian. You know, I don't want to presume that the nine passengers, none of which, none of whom gave up their seats are outsiders, not Coshaians or none of FSM citizens.
My understanding, Chairman Urosamal, is two Kankan delegates, spouse of one of the delegates, a staff of one of the delegates, three individuals from National Police, or Police, I understand, and two, I understand, and I stand corrected, but two individuals who were here for a long time, I remember there's, these were the two individuals that were tested positive. Again, I stand corrected, but those are the individuals, but that flight was chartered by the Constitutional Convention, that was the flight, they decide who gets on that plane. That's the information I got on the, those on that flight.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, short recess. Congress is back in session, I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Palik for sharing that sad story about the situation in Coshai. My prayers go out to the young lady, and of course, my, our condolences to the family for the loss of Okay, so next item, Chief Clerk, item fifteen. Do we have any standing committee report?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item, special committee reports, do we have any?
None, also, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item number seventeen, for assignment of measures and communications, please refer to referral sheet number twenty-two dash seventy-seven.
Okay, Chairman members, look at that for your purposes, next item.
Unfinished business, none at the moment, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're now on our bill calendar, first bill.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
May I ask for a short recess, please?
Okay, short recess, go on the jet. So let's go back.
Thank you, floor.
Congress is back in session, we're on the bill calendar, first bill, Chief Clerk.
The first bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-two dash one forty-eight, CD two, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash one forty-eight, CD two, is a bill for an act to amend Title fifty of the Code of the Federated States of Marginesia annotated by creating a new chapter three to establish the FSM L T Porter Protection Act of twenty-twenty-two to require all persons entering the country to be fully COVID-nineteen vaccinated, require the establishment of COVID-nineteen entry requirements by regulation, impose penalties where fraudulent COVID-nineteen vaccination documents are used to enter the country and for other purposes.
Devin Burton. Move to pass twenty-two dash one forty-eight, CD two, for second and final reading.
Second. And move ten seconded, that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty-two dash one forty-eight. Discussion, discussion, short recess. Congress is back in session, we're still discussing CB twenty-two dash one forty-eight, CD two, any further discussion? Question asked, call for, there is no objection, discussion is closed, we will forward by wrong call of the delegations, Chief Clerk.
For the State of Juke, Chairman Arrietaz.
Yes.
State of Pompe, Chairman Berman.
Aye, ma'am.
State of Coshai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urosamal. Chairman Urosamal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
CB number twenty-two dash one forty-eight, CD two, has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-two dash two oh seven, CD two, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash two oh seven, CD two, is a bill for an act to further amend Section eight oh five of Title fifty-four of the Code of the Federated States of Marginesia annotated as amended by public laws numbers eighteen dash one oh seven, twenty-one dash one fifty-two, and twenty-two dash fifty-seven to authorize on an extraordinary basis the Pompe state's share of the extra twenty percent of net taxes collected during fiscal year twenty-twenty-three be remitted to fuel all sailors for the purpose of providing a fuel subsidy to Pompe residents and for other purposes.
Great, Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker, move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty-two dash two oh seven, CD two, discussion.
Speaker.
Speaker, may I take the floor first?
Right, again.
I have a proposed floor amendment to the title of the bill.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Speaker, I have a proposed floor amendment to Congress Bill Number twenty-two dash two oh seven. May I ask the Chief Clerk to read?
Okay, Chief Clerk, it's short, so we get into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to Congressional Bill Number twenty-two dash two oh seven, CD two, offered by Senator Isaac Figueroa. It has only one item, and it reads as follows. Item one, page one, in the title, after the term residence, add the following sentence, "To clarify that Yap's share of the extra twenty percent of net taxes collected during fiscal year twenty-twenty-three will be deposited into the FSM trust fund."
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
I move for the adoption of the proposed floor amendment.
Seven.
Move, again, that Congress adopt the offer for amendment to CB twenty-two dash two zero seven, CD two, Floor Leader.
Move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the motion made by Honorable Figueroa.
Again. And move then seconded, that the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading be suspended. Those in favor say aye.
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 And Gary, the relevant rules are now suspended, so discussion on the offered amendment.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess.
Open the over.
Congress is back in session, we're still discussing the offer for amendment by Chairman.
Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Your point, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I rise on a point of privilege to inform Honorable Romalo that the money for the contract of James Nice is now defeated because it lacks one foot, and now that is coming, it's already too late, thank you.
Thank you. That's not quite true, Chairman Romalo, we have decided to defer it to the next session to work on it.
You know, Speaker, they knew the contract was expired a long time ago.
That's true.
They should have done something about it, and not make it Romalo or Floor Leaders' problem.
Yeah, it's a.
Point of order, can we proceed so we can finish the bill?
Yes, we're discussing the offer for amendment by Chairman Figueroa, any other discussion?
Question.
Unscripted question has been called for, without objection, discussion is closed, let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offer for amendment to CB twenty-two dash two oh seven, CD two, by Chairman Figueroa, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, the offered for amendment by Chairman Figueroa is adopted, we now have CD three. Any further discussion on CD three? Short recess. Let's go back, Congress is back in session, we're still discussing the CD three, any further discussion on CD three?
Question.
Without objection, discussion is closed. We vote by wrong call of the delegations, Chief Clerk.
For the State of Juke, Chairman Arrietaz.
Yes.
State of Pompe, Chairman Berman.
Aye, ma'am.
State of Coshai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urosamal.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
CB number twenty-two dash two oh seven, has passed Congress, CD three, has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-two dash two ten, CD two, for second and final reading. CB number twenty-two dash two ten, CD two, is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty-two dash eighty-six as amended by public laws numbers twenty-two dash one oh one, twenty-two dash one oh two, and twenty-two dash one oh six by amending Sections four and five thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Pompe and Juke states and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker, move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Sure, go ahead.
Move ten seconded, that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty-two dash ten, two ten, CD two. Discussion, discussion, Chairman Net.
Thank you, Speaker, I have a written amendment that I would like to offer, it has been circulated. Because of the length, I asked that we dispense its reading. I therefore move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Agreed.
It's been moved and seconded, that the offer for amendment to CB twenty-two dash two ten, CD two, by, offered by Chairman Net, be adopted, because of its length, we will dispense with its reading, and the relevant rules are still suspended, discussion on the offered for amendment.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Vice Chairman Christian.
I've consulted with the introducer of the amendment, and I will be, I offer oral amendment to the amendment that's been proposed, may I?
Proceed.
Mr. Speaker, after item four on the amendment, insert five, item five, Madelineum Communities Water System, thirty-five thousand, and renumber the rest of the numbers as six, five become six, six become seven, seven become eight, eight become nine, I so move.
Seven.
Short recess. Chairman, let's go back, Congress is back in session, you're still, it's still after four, Vice Chairman Christian.
All right, so, Mr. Speaker, I'm now confused. I want to amend, to insert in the amendment itself, may I use that?
Yes.
In the amendment itself, item five should be Madelineum Communities Water System, thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
And also, the item three in the amendment offered by Senator Net, delete eighty-five thousand and insert fifty. And create that new item that I mentioned earlier as item five, Madelineum Communities Water System, thirty-five, and then renumber after that new five. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I so move for the offered oral amendment.
Sure.
Again, that the offered oral amendment by Vice Chairman Christian to the proposed for amendment, be adopted, the discussion on the offered oral amendment.
Speaker. Yes. Speaker, I was excited when Vice Chairman Christian start listing those, and I didn't hear the twenty thousand that he committed to me, so, thank you, anyway.
July, in July.
July, July, thank you.
Any other discussion? If none, without objection, discussion is closed, let's vote on the offered oral amendment. Those in favor of the offered oral amendment by Vice Chairman Christian, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried, the offered oral amendment is adopted, we now have, continue on the for amendment to CB twenty-two dash two ten, CD two, as already amended. Discussion on it, any other discussion? If none, without objection, discussion is closed. We will vote on the offer for amendment, those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried, the offer for amendment is adopted, we now have CD three. Any further discussion on CD three, short recess. Okay, let's go back, Congress is back in session, we're still discussing CD three, any further discussion on CD three? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed, we will vote by wrong call of the delegations, Chief Clerk.
For the State of Juke, Chairman Arrietaz.
Yes.
State of Pompe, Chairman Berman.
Aye, ma'am.
State of Coshai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urosamal.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
CB number twenty-two dash two ten, CD three, has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we do not have any more bills.
Okay. Short recess. Congress is back in session. If there is no further business under the bill calendar, we now go down to the item twenty, resolution calendar, first resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, the first resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one twenty-one for adoption. CR Number twenty-two dash one twenty-one is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of one hundred four thousand, three hundred fifty dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration, or HRSA, to fund the FSM maternal-child health program for the budget period from February nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, short recess. Congress is back in session, we're discussing resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-one, any further discussion on that? Without objection, discussion is closed, let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution Number twenty-two dash one twenty-one, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried, resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-one is adopted by Congress, next resolution, Chief Clerk.
The next resolution under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one twenty-two for adoption. CR Number twenty-two dash one twenty-two is a resolution approving and accepting a grant from the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, or UNESCO, in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents to fund and support the FSM Office of National Archives Culture and Historic Preservation, or NACH, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Berman.
So move for its adoption.
Again. Say again.
Again, that Congress adopt resolution Number twenty-two dash one twenty-two, discussion.
The, yes, Speaker, the issue came up yesterday is because of the date, so it was a typo, it should be May twenty, twenty-twenty-one, not twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so that technical correction will be made, okay, ignore the stat. Any further discussion on it, yes. Any question on it? Yes. In physical, Chairman Rosamal?
Yeah, just uh.
There you go.
The title delete the figure sixteen thousand five, two hundred fifty-eight point five-five and ensure insert in Luther of sixteen thousand two hundred fifty-nine.
So, again.
Everywhere where you see that to sixteen to five eight point five-five, delete the point five-five and ensure delete eight and point five-five and insert in Luther of after five nine.
Short resist. Short resist. Congress second session, any further discussion on the
Question.
Question has been called for. If there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. carried, resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty-two is adopted by Congress.
Speaker.
Staff, take note of the technical correction to be made. Yes, floor leader Harvard?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have two resolutions that I'd like to withdraw. They're so needed by the micro port.
Can we just go back to the first resolution that we just finished? We have to reconsider it. Jipper, can you bring us back to resolution one-twenty-one? Someone to make, make a motion to reconsider, Chairman Perman, our action on one-twenty-one.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
Again.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress reconsider its action on resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-one. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May, carried, so we now reconsider that action, Jipper, read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, we have Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-twenty-one under the resolution calendar. This is for adoption. CR number twenty-two dash one-twenty-one is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of one hundred four thousand three hundred fifty dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration, or HRS A, to fund the ESM maternal-child health program for the budget period from February nineteen, twenty-twenty-two to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Perman.
So move.
Second.
Again.
Mr. Speaker, short recess, please.
Short resist. Congress back in session, discussion on the resolution twenty-two dash one.
Question.
Question has been called for. If there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
May, motion carried, resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty-one is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Jipper.
Mr. Speaker, we do not have any more resolutions.
Speaker.
So, yeah, let's start with floor leader, then Chairman Figure, floor leader Harvard?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw resolutions number twenty-two dash one-twenty-nine and twenty-two dash, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight and one-twenty-nine to be placed on resolution calendar for action.
Okay, any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolutions twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight and twenty-two dash one-twenty-nine be withdrawn from committees and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Short resist. Congress is back in session. Okay, let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of the motion to withdraw, please, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, resolutions number twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight and one-twenty-nine are now placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay, first resolution.
Here.
Chairman Figure, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. I move to withdraw Congress resolution number twenty-two dash one oh nine and be put on the resolution calendar for action.
Any second?
Again.
Seconded that resolution twenty-two dash one oh nine be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh nine is withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay, short resist. Congress is back in session. We now have those three resolutions. The first one, Jipper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight under the resolution calendar for adoption. CR number twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight is a resolution authorizing the president to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Samson E. Petrov to serve as a member of the MICA Board of Directors representing the national government.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Okay. Any second?
Again.
That moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight. Discussion. Any discussion?
Question.
Without objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight, say aye.
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 Of course, may, motion carried, resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-eight is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Jipper.
The next resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-twenty-nine for adoption. CR number twenty-two dash one-twenty-nine is a resolution authorizing the president to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Paulino Rosario to serve as a member of the MICA Board of Directors representing the state of Pompe.
So move.
Chairman. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-nine. Discussion. Any discussion?
Question.
Question has been called for. If without objection, discussion is closed. We will vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-nine, say aye. Of course, may.
Aye.
Aye.
Carried, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh nine is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Jipper.
Speaker.
Thank you, Ms.
Go ahead, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, the next resolution under the resolution calendar now is CR number twenty-two dash one oh nine for adoption. CR number twenty-two dash one oh nine is a resolution approving and accept, accepting a grant in the amount of SDR three million six hundred thousand special drawing rights from the World Bank, giving additional funding to the project for strengthening public financial management, or PFM, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Short resist. Congress is back in session. Okay, we have resolution one oh nine, any discussion on it? What's this?
You can move for the adoption of the resolution.
Again.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty-two dash one oh nine. Okay, we're going to improve our financing, so they will be quick in producing our PCTs and our
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
I have a proposed oral amendment to amend the use of the money to direct it to infrastructure development.
Short resist. Congress back in session, we're discussing CP twenty-two dash one oh nine. Any other discussion? If none, without objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution twenty-two dash one oh nine, say aye.
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 Carried, resolution twenty-two dash one oh nine is adopted by Congress. Okay, next resolution, Jipper.
Mr. Speaker, we do not have any more resolutions.
Okay, Chairman Perman, you have to call.
Yes, Speaker, I have three more resolutions to withdraw and place.
Proceed.
Resolution twenty-two, one-one-six, twenty-two, one-two-five, and twenty-two, one-two-six. Motion to withdraw and place. So move.
Again.
Any second, it's moved and seconded that resolution numbers twenty-two, one-one-six, twenty-two, one-twenty-five, and twenty-two, one-twenty-six be withdrawn from committees and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carried, resolution, resolutions twenty-two, one-one-six, one-twenty-five, and one-twenty-six are withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution counter for action. Short resist. Congress is back in session. I believe those resolutions have been withdrawn and placed. Jipper, first resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The first resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-one-six for adoption. CR number twenty-two dash one-one-six is a resolution approving and accepting a fifty thousand dollars grant from the United Nations Education, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, or UNESCO, to support the project in the ESM entitled UNESCO GPE ESM Internet Connected Learning Platform Space, or ICLPS, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman.
So move for its adoption.
Any second?
Again.
Again.
Moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution twenty-two dash one-one-six. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, without objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash one-one-six, say aye.
Aye.
Carried, resolution twenty-two dash one-sixteen is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Jipper.
The next resolution under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-twenty-five for adoption. CR number twenty-two dash one-twenty-five is a resolution to further amend the president's public health emergency declaration dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty, as amended on February seventh, twenty-twenty, and further amended on March eleventh, twenty-twenty, April seventeen, twenty-twenty, May thirtieth, twenty-twenty, July tenth, twenty-twenty, August tenth, twenty at twenty-twenty, November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, and January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Chairman Perman.
Yes, so move for its adoption.
Again.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-five. Discussion. Any discussion?
Speaker, short resist.
Short resist. Congress back in session, we're still discussing CP.
Question.
Question. All four, without objection, discussion is closed. We will vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-five, say aye.
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 Motion carried, resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty-five is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Jipper.
The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-twenty-six for adoption. CR number, number twenty-two dash one-twenty-six is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of one hundred nine thousand nine, nine hundred ninety-one dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration to fund the ESM maternal-child health program in its services for the budget period from December fourth, twenty-twenty-one to February eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Perman.
So move.
Again, moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-six. Discussion. Short resist. Congress back in session. We're still discussing resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty-six. Any discussion?
Questions called for.
For, if there is no objection, discussion is closed. Vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty-six, say aye.
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 Motion carried, resolution number twenty-two dash one-twenty-six is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Jipper.
Mr. Speaker, we do not have any more resolutions.
Okay, there being no further business under the resolution calendar, let's go down to item twenty-one. Introduction of bills and resolutions, if you have any, please pass them on to Jipper. Next item miscellaneous business. What's your miscellaneous business, John, lady? Any miscellaneous business? If you don't have any, I just want to since, oh. Chairman Horus Mal, you are now designated to acting floor leader. Okay, I like the word acting. Okay.
Mr. Speaker, does Senator Rosamal get that kind of compensation that some people in foreign affairs are looking toward getting?
Even if you're conducting for ninety days and more. So, yeah.
Okay, my friend, I I accept the honor without the money.
Okay, to our now thing, before you do that, I also want to take this opportunity to thank all our few colleagues, members of Congress, and my special thanks to Chairman Perman and his committee, the committee on Health and Social Affairs. We've done a lot of things, important things in this session, and I congratulate you on doing all those. And also to committee education and I just say for their, doing their portions of the budget. I urge all the other chairman and committees to also finish up hopefully by our July, our next session. And I will now give it to our acting floor leader to do the in-house things.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I share the same sentiment that you had expressed on our behalf. And with that, I move that the speaker, the vice speaker, and the real floor leader would review the records of our meeting from day one up to day twenty-seven. Make any technical and corrective amendments to the record. So I so move for the adoption.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded that the records of our session from day one until today be reviewed and corrected by the presiding officers, including any acting. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, so yet, okay, any other miscellaneous business by members? If none, there's no objection. Acting for.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress stand for short resist.
Short resist. Congress is back in session. Any announcement from the chairs? Announcement, Chairman Ned, you were saying?
Thank you, Speaker. RNT Committee will have its budget hearing on Wednesday, June first at ten-thirty in the morning.
Okay, take note, members of RNT Committee. Okay.
One big time.
Yeah, one big time, that's what he said. Okay, Chairman Figure?
Yeah, I thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your committee on waste and means will have an oversight and dealing with the Department of Finance and Justice on Tuesday, nine-thirty your time. And after that, we will work on our budget hearing schedule.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chairman Wali?
Thank you, Speaker. Now, announcement from committee on external affairs, thank you.
You, okay, Chairman Rosamal.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your committee on education. And I wish to thank all of you members for approving our committee report on the budget and therefore, your committee on EU will have a vacation until next session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice Chairman, Panic, you have any announcement?
No, Speaker, thank you very much.
Any announcement, Chairman Perman?
No announcement.
No announcement.
Chair.
Speaker.
Lady. Bonman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for our committee on climate change. Will have the budget hearing in July because they're still working on other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Chairman, Aridos.
Thank you, Speaker, no announcement.
Thank you.
Yes, Speaker. Yes, thank you, Speaker. First of all, I want to thank you, Speaker, and all members for supporting the bill, especially the pharmaceutical bill and the border health. I thank you on behalf of the Committee on Health, thank you. And also because there is a, there's a request from Speaker regarding to look into the issue in Koshai, regardless of the issue in Koshai, and I'm gonna ask members, the Committee on Health members, to honor, watch out for your, for an oversight hearing with the Department of Health, especially regarding the grants, all the grants that we've been approving on the maternal-child and health programs. So I'm gonna ask members of the Committee on Health, HSA, to be ready. If worse come to worse, maybe following week, we'll start sending out email for our next hearing. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman, the members of HSA committee. Our Vice Chairman Christian, any announcement?
Yes, on behalf of Chairman Romolo, I ask that Transportation Department Finance and Justice, please pay for a ship. Thank you.
Thank you for following through on that. It's been a big problem. Thank you, Vice Chairman Christian. Okay, any other announcement? If none.
Yeah.
Speaker.
Chairman Wali.
Yeah, what, what day, for planning purposes, what day, July, do you plan to have the session?
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. You had your answer, Chairman Wali, during recess, so. Acting floor.
Thank you.
Roosevelt.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. If there are no actions needed by this Congress during this fourth regular session, I move that Congress stands in recess, in, stand adjourned, sign and die.
Second.
Again.
Well, it has been moved and seconded that the fourth session of the twenty-second Congress stand adjourned. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Motion carried. For a recent, the fourth regular session of the twenty-second Congress is now adjourned, sign and die.